The order of December 13, 2022. The first item is the Pledge of Allegiance. For all of you that are able to stand up and willing, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And person at the open forum. And I'll ask our staff, too, if we had any email submissions for the open forum. No? And then I don't see anyone online. So as a reminder for folks, and I know some folks might be here for the first time, so welcome. The open forum is an opportunity for anyone from the public to come to our Richfield City Council meeting and share any thoughts that they have with the Richfield City Council. It's not a moment to discuss back and forth, but just to share your comments for up to three minutes on an item on the agenda or off of the agenda. So I'll ask one more time. All right, it looks like we do have one person here.
Honor. And it has been an honor to have you as our mayor for the last few years. And we're gonna miss you. And yeah, that's all. I just wanted to say that. We love you.
Thank you. Here is for the open forum. So I will close the open forum and move to the next item, which is the approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting of November 16, 2022, the special city council work session of November 16, 2022, the special city council work session of November 19, 2022, and the regular city council meeting of November 22, 2022.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Seconded to approve the minutes. Any comments or questions on the minutes? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes have been approved. So we have two items next on our agenda. We have two presentations. And the next one is the presentation of the Edwina Garcia Community Builder Award and proclamation to resident and leader Emilia Gonzalez Avalos. Is Emilia here? I don't see Emilia. Okay. So I know she was going to attend. She was coming in person. So if she ends up showing up, maybe we'll go back and include her. But I don't see her here. So we have the proclamation. And Edwina Garcia unfortunately couldn't make it to our city council meeting tonight. So I will be presenting the award and reading the proclamation on her behalf. But for people who may or may not know Edwina Garcia, she is a longstanding Richfield resident and community leader who has made monumental impact on the community of Richfield, but also the state of Minnesota. And in her honor, we have created, as the city of Richfield, the Community Builder Award in the name of council member Edwina Garcia. And it looks like Emilia is walking in. So I'll actually get the award. Excellent. And Emilia, I was just getting to the item. So I'm wondering if you want to join me at the podium?
Hello?
Okay. Emilia, do you want your family up with you for this?
Yeah.
All right. We're gonna wait and get her family. So just to finish well, the description of the award. Again, so this is in honor of Edwina Garcia starting this Community Builder Award. But for all of you that know Edwina, she, her whole legacy was to build community. She's built countless leaders and helped with countless community initiatives. And so this award goes to someone who is a Richfield resident every single year, who has dedicated their life to building community. So for this year's Edwina Garcia Community Builder Award, it is going to Richfield resident Emilia Avalos Gonzalez and her beautiful family. Hola, thank you for coming. So I will read the proclamation. Before you got here, I was just giving the description of the award, the work that Edwina does. So the proclamation of the city of Richfield. Whereas Emilia Gonzalez Avalos has received the third annual Edwina Garcia Community Builder Award for her commitment to the Richfield community. And whereas she is an immigrant born in Mexico City and raised in Minnesota. And whereas Ms. Gonzalez Avalos is the executive director of Unidos Minnesota, a grassroots organization that builds power for Minnesotans' working families to advance social, racial, and economic justice. And whereas Ms. Gonzalez Avalos has worked tirelessly during her time as executive director to transform the organization from a small networking program to a statewide, multi-ethnic institution. And whereas Ms. Gonzalez Avalos has led the organization through a time of growing prejudice against immigrants and Latinos in the country, along with an unprecedented pandemic. And whereas Ms. Gonzalez Avalos worked to ensure she was able to bring all the tools she had available to support her community through these chaotic times. Ms. Gonzalez, whereas Ms. Gonzalez Avalos did all did all she could and navigated the world, being a mother, a caregiver, finishing a bachelor's degree, and applying for and being awarded a 2022 Bush Foundation Fellow. Whereas Ms. Gonzalez Avalos sees immense opportunity in the future for long-lasting change by leveraging the collectivism and capacity for self-determination of Latina workers, migrants, teens, and girls. Whereas Richfield community celebrates Emilia and all she has brought and brings great pride to our city and community and her support and empowerment of families across Minnesota. Now, therefore, I, Maria Regan Gonzalez, Mayor of the city of Richfield and the Richfield City Council members, do hereby award you this proclamation for your service demonstrating your commitment to the core values of the city of Richfield, proclaimed this 13th day of December, 2022. And then we have an award for you as well. And I will be presenting you the award because unfortunately, la jefa Edwina Garcia is ill right now and cannot present this award to you. But I'm wondering if we can stand up here with your family and take a picture? Chris, there's one more.
So I just wanted to share a couple remarks. It's such an honor to be celebrating you, Emilia. And this night where you and I get to celebrate our leadership together, but also having our community in this room together is very powerful. And I would not be the leader that I am without you and your leadership. And just want to thank you, Emilia, for everything that you've done for me, everything you've done for our comunidad. And we're very thankful to be able to honor you. And you're such an asset to Richfield and such an asset to our entire comunidad. And I say that on behalf of Edwina, who can't be here today, but also as the mayor of Richfield and a good friend of yours. So it's been so beautiful to lead together. So felices en esto.
Okay. Emilia wants to share a few words.
Well, thank you so much, Mayor Maria Regan Gonzalez and every single one of city council members and everyone that works in the city and also everyone who's here. For me, it's truly an honor to have my name in this award next to two of my personal friends and mentors and supporters, like Edwina Garcia and my friend. And we're not related. Like Gonzalez is like Johnson or an Anderson. There's so many Gonzales. We're not related, but I love our mayor as a sister. And for me, it's such an honor to have lived the leadership of the first Latina mayor in the city of Richfield and also be a companion. The incredible expectation she had to face with the unexpected and tumultuous times during the COVID-19 pandemic and witnessing her temperance and her commitment and her resilience was truly inspiring for me because we were facing all these challenges together. Like she was sharing how Richfield was setting up infrastructure to support housing for folks regardless of immigration status. While we at Unidos were having conversations with the state of Minnesota on how we're gonna disburse Minnesota housing infrastructure money so that the same issue could be supported across the state. So what happened in Richfield was able to inspire statewide escalation, scaling up for people that lived in Worthington, in St. Cloud, and Wilmar, and Rochester, and places that I can't even pronounce the names. And 20 years ago, when I moved to Richfield, I had no idea what was equity or racism or anti-racism. I knew how it felt, but I couldn't put an eye, like I did not understand how that worked. I didn't know any better. And through the involvement of PMAC, the Police Community Advisory Committee, I think that was my first adult volunteer experience in my life. I mean, I did some things with like the hospital and, you know, other sort of volunteer opportunities. But that was the first time that somebody asked my opinion. And I didn't know. Probably if there's minutes, I can probably have sound very problematic because I didn't know any better. And the city supported my growth. And people saw me. And it felt like a community. And I think that is an experience for this small municipality, but which brings so much joy to our community. So I'm very excited about the possibilities of the future. I can't wait to see what Maria does in her role at the hospital. And I'm very grateful. And just like, I think this is, this brings me joy. And it's important to know that I'm never able to do anything alone. My family are great supporters and inspiration. My husband, who is amazing and does a lot of the caretaking when I'm away. My kids, whose time away from mom sometimes can be taxing. And my dad. We went through really hard times. And we have a lot of learned lessons. And I think it's important for the legacy of all of us to not forget what we learned and to be courageous on the things that we learn and really fight hard for the things that we believe. And I'm sorry to see my friend not be my major. I really like that. Thank you so much. And thank you, Edwina. I know you're gonna see the video. And you're gonna evaluate me. So I hope, I hope I did good for you.
I know, she will. Oh, my gosh. Congratulations. When we do have proclamations and awards, I do give an opportunity for the council. Does anyone in the council, would they like to share anything for Emilia? Councilmember Supple.
I just wanted to add my thanks for all your advocacy and all you do for our community because you're just so well appreciated. And this is such a well-deserved award. So thank you so much for all your advocacy.
I'm councilmember Whalen.
I just want to share that I'm lucky enough. I get the opportunity in my day job to work with Unidos. And truly, the transformational powerhouse you have built that is that organization and community is so, just so meaningful. Like you're literally creating spaces for more and more immigrants to and just people in the Latino community to have a voice in places they literally were not allowed before. Particularly educate people on how to go caucus. And that Unidos opened up the ability to caucus, to have a voice in a political party to so many undocumented folks. That that was just huge. And I know there's been a bunch more work that I don't know of, and you continue to build. And so thank you for everything you're doing, particularly for Richfield. But the way you are transforming our whole state is really powerful. And it's really an honor that you call Richfield home.
Other comments? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Congratulations, Amelia. I feel like I haven't been following along as closely with your career in the past few years. But my first sort of volunteer thing for the city of Richfield was on the Human Rights Commission with you. You've made such an impression on me then. I remember both just your sort of endless, the endless energy you had for being engaged in Richfield. I remember sometimes you didn't have like childcare. So you'd just bring your kid, and it worked, and you were there. And you were showing up for Richfield. And it's very clear that's shown up in many other areas of your life and many other areas of activism. And you told this one story, and I don't know why it was even relevant at the time, but it stuck with me. And it was specifically about recently after you'd moved to Richfield, and you were driving with your father or somebody at night, and you saw the like lights on the 66th Street underpass. And of course, I'm very like street oriented. So you told me that, and you talked about living in this beautiful place. And I feel like at that time in my life, I was so cynical. And I was like, the lights don't work. This is bad. And to hear you from this totally different, so much better perspective of this was a beautiful place and you're happy to be here, it informed the way I see Richfield, the way I still see Richfield. So it really stuck with me. It was just one small moment. But I know that you have that positivity and that you see beauty and you make beauty in the world. So thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Councilmember Chapman.
Thank you, Mayor. And congratulations, Amelia. And it's such a joy for us to see your work recognized and see you and your life recognized in this space. And look forward to future days where your work and your life will continue to be recognized. And I just want to acknowledge and just say very publicly that your work and your life stands as a testimony of the benefit of your heart translating into action almost immediately and constantly. And I just see this over the years that there's this habit of my heart's moved, so my body moves. My heart's moved, my body moves. And so take a note, folks, that this is powerful. And you have that power. And I'm so grateful that you have invested that power here in nuestra comunidad. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Amelia. Thank you for your family for being here as well. It's so nice to have you here. Thank you. Okay, for the next item, I'll pass it to our city manager, Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. So the next item is recognition of our fearless leader for the last four years. And we've lined up some speakers. And we've been asked to keep it short, so we're gonna try. But first off is Judy Mo, Richfield Disability Advocacy Partnership, or ARDAP, as I call it.
Hello, everyone. My name is Judy Mo, and I am the director of the Richfield Disability Advocacy Partnership. And up here with me are some of our core members of ARDAP, including my daughter Raven Mo, who co-founded ARDAP with me. And Raven and I met Mayor Maria Regan Gonzalez in July of 2018, when she was a city council member. And she told us that she was running for mayor. And she wanted us to help her get some people from the disability community to get together because she wanted to include their voices in her campaign. And so that was such a rarity. I had never heard a candidate talk about that before and want to reach out to us. And so I jumped at the chance. And after we all met together, I thought, you know, we have this huge group of people together. What are we gonna do? We can't just all, you know, not take advantage of it. And so Maria encouraged us to continue to meet. And that's how ARDAP came about. And since then, and always with Mayor Maria's support, we have accomplished many things in Richfield, including advocating for the one-of-a-kind accessible housing policy that was passed by the city council last year and has served as a model for an accessible housing bill at the state level. When people ask me how they can start a group like ARDAP in their city, I tell them that one of the biggest contributors to our success is that we have a city council and a mayor who work with us and support our work. We would not have achieved all we have in the last four years without the willingness of our mayor and city council. The powerful thing about our mayor is that she is always thinking about ways she can lift up and give power to community members and encourage us to lead. We are so grateful to you, Maria, and can never thank you enough for your support. Of course, it is hard for us to see you go. But we are so grateful that we had you for the last six years that you've been in office here in Richfield and all of the amazing work you have done and encouraged others to do. And having your support and mentorship has meant everything to me personally and the entire disability community. And I just want to say that we love you and we wish you all the luck and success in all of the amazing things we know you're going to go on to do.
Thank you so much.
And I will turn things over to another community leader, Ruth Evangelista.
Muy buenas tardes. Voy a hablar en español porque he ha dirigido esto totalmente para ti. Good night, everyone. I speak in Spanish because this message is for the mayor, Maria Regan Gonzalez. Here are la red latina educación temprana. Distinguida mayor Maria Regan Gonzalez. Aquí está tu grupo de mujeres poderosas que iniciaste hace mucho tiempo, no siendo nada en cuestión política, pero creaste una muy buena base de líderes. Ese liderazgo tú lo traes. Y nos compartiste, lo alimentamos. Estoy aquí solamente para agradecerte, para decirte que en cada una de nosotras no hubo la duda de que ibas a liderar muy bien esta ciudad. Esta ciudad le faltaba eso. Que nosotros como inmigrantes nos sacaras de las sombras, de decir que cada uno de nosotros tenemos el poder de crecer y de hacer algo por nuestras comunidades. Muchas gracias. Este es el resultado apenas. Y vamos por más de lo que has formado de un grupo de mujeres que han creído en ti, pero también han creído en esta comunidad. Haciendo colaboraciones. Y también a los que están sentados ahí. Gracias por sus apoyos. Y gracias porque han participado en nuestros programas. Estas mujeres son grandiosas. Y esto es el resultado de trabajar en conjunto para mejorar una comunidad, no solamente los latinos, sino una comunidad en general, que sí necesitamos de sus apoyos. Muchas gracias. Te deseo lo mejor en tus próximos proyectos, en tu vida personal. Y cada una de nosotras te agradecemos por haber puesto la fe y también por haber hecho que nuestra sabiduría creciera y seamos más poderosos. Muchas gracias.
Gracias a usted.
Well, she told me that I have to speak English. So I'm gonna do my best.
Basically, I want to say thank you, Maria. Thank you to the city of Richfield, thank you all of you that are sitting right there for believing in us, for believing in Partnership Academy. I don't know where we would end up being if you wouldn't really believe in us, and what better way to serve our community through education, especially with the early students, you know, the preschoolers and stuff like that. I see my school, I could say my school, our school, our community school, our family's school, is huge and as big as I could ever dreamed. And it all came true because of you, your support, and believing that we could do it. I'm very proud to say that Partnership Academy has doubled up what we expected to have in our school, and we continue to grow. And just thank you for trusting us, thank you for being there, thank you for supporting us. And we do know that it would have been not easy if you wouldn't have been there to support us all the way. On behalf of Partnership Academy, the other founder, Lisa Hendricks, I want to tell you, thank you, thank you, thank you. And we just want to continue to work with you in the community, and make sure that we continue to move forward through educating our youth to become better leaders, to become, you know, because there's, the new voices are gonna be heard here, so. Thank you so much, and good luck, whatever you decide to do, because I can see you can do many things. Thank you so much, everybody, so, thank you.
Now, I want to invite the representative mayor of our...
It gives me a lot of joy to be here tonight with another full chamber here to celebrate the visionary and transformative leadership of our mayor, Maria Reagan Gonzalez. Thank you for always bringing your whole self to this work. Thank you for your talent and the time you've shared with this community. It's a better and more inclusive place because of it. And I have to say that the concept of time is a little disorienting for me tonight. I feel like it was just yesterday that I was up there on the dais with you, you know, getting into some good trouble at times, scheming, trying to think of how we can make our community a better place. And I'm just so grateful for the partnership and ability to work together. I'm a better representative and community member because of our partnership, and I think a lot of people here can probably say the same thing. And then, on another hand, speaking of time, it just sort of feels like you've been the mayor and the soul of this community for ages. And I don't know, I think a lot of us, it is gonna be hard to see you go. I think you're gonna see a lot of people in the coming weeks and months, you know, think, what would Maria do? What would Maria say? And so, you know, don't turn your cellphone off just yet. But in reality, our city, our community is in such a strong place, because one of the hallmarks of your leadership is that you organize, you lift up new leaders, and you've created a stronger community of folks that are pulling in the same direction. You've certainly left this place better than you found it. And the last thing I wanted to say is, you know, I can understand a night like tonight being bittersweet, how it might feel like, you know, a book is ending or a door is closing. But this truly is a celebration. I'm reminded of the night four years ago, about four years ago, when Maria was sworn in as mayor with the full chamber, and so much, so many smiles, so much joy, so much hope, so much optimism, after you opened a door that had never been opened before, as our community and state's first Latino mayor. And Maria, you just never stopped opening doors. Opening doors to new leaders to participate in decision-making process, opening doors for our young people, some who saw a leader that looked like them for the very first time. Literally, opening doors of homes and businesses for community members that love this place. And these doors that you've opened, they're staying open. And that is an incredible and lasting gift that you've given to this community, that day after day, month after month, year after year, our community is a brighter, stronger place because of your inclusive leadership. And so, I think I speak for everyone here in wishing you all the best as you turn the page and write your next chapter. I think you're gonna probably keep on opening some of those doors.
For sure.
Congrats, my friend.
Thank you.
Next is Crystal Brackey.
Good evening. My name is Crystal Brackey. I'm on the Richfield Public Schools Board of Education, and I'm joined here tonight with Superintendent Steve Unowski and Christina Gonzalez, who leads our student support work for the district. And we represent so many people at Richfield Public Schools here tonight. When I think about what our young people have experienced over the last four years and the six years that we've worked together and all, obviously, there has been a tremendous amount of trauma. The pandemic, the ways that gun violence has touched young people in our community. And then, there have been so many joys as well. And I think about how in each one of those moments that were really public, and also a lot of moments that were not, you were so often the first call or the first text. And I think that's true for all of us. What has been such a constant in those moments and in the conversations that we've had is your focus on our young people, on the experiences that they are having inside and outside of schools, on their families, and on what our young people and their families are telling us that they need, and what we need to do to listen and to act, and to show that we are putting our actions behind our words. So, I and we are just so grateful, not just for your support and your partnership, but also your friendship to Richfield Public Schools, but also to all of the schools in our community. We are excited to continue this work of staying centered on our young people and on their hopes and their dreams, and what we as the adults need to do to get out of their way and to make those dreams possible. We have a strong foundation already in place with Mayor-elect Supple, with the rest of the council, with the staff. We're excited to keep working with you, but we are going to miss you. And just want you to know that you're always gonna be part of our family. So we got you a few things to help vault you into retirement. And spoiler alert, one of them is a Richfield Public Schools zip-up. So we're excited to see you rocking it around town, and thank you so much for everything.
Oh, thank you so much.
I... I am gonna pass things next to City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Crystal. And I'm gonna stay here to make it quick and because I'm lazy. When I joined Richfield, I told my family that I thought the city was special, but that the job was gonna be crazy hard, and that has really proven to be true.
Yes.
Both things. Mayor, we have been through it, even right up to this meeting. Tonight, though, as I reflect back, the overwhelming emotion is gratitude. I feel really lucky to have worked with you this past four years. You just need to look at these pictures to know that you led with your whole heart. You've been a steady and positive leader, always taking the high road and doing what's best for the city. You work hard to connect with residents and are always looking to empower others. What the pictures don't show is your grit and integrity. You are smart and tough. You have the ability to understand the details and stay big picture. You own your decisions, you accept criticism with grace and learning, and you take less credit for yourself and give more to others. You are also a good government nerd, which I love. I will close with a quote from poet Muriel Strode. "Do not follow where the path may lead, go instead where there is no path and leave a trick." As the first Latina mayor in Minnesota, you have inspired many, including my Latina daughters. You also leave Richfield with the arc bent more towards justice for all residents. We will miss you, I will miss you. And for one of the last times, I turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thank you so much, City Manager Rodriguez, and thank you so much for the community members for sharing your words. So, first, I want to thank you for being here tonight. It's raining, it's cold, it's snowing, so thank you for coming out, and thank you to all the folks that couldn't make it today as well. But when I think about where my work in Richfield started, it was 10 years ago before I was a resident of Richfield, and I started to serve the community as a staff person, serving in Richfield's Public Health Department, working with community members to build a healthy Richfield. And that's when I fell in love with the community, decided to buy my first home here. I loved the diversity, the accessibility, the beauty. In many ways, Richfield was a hidden gem back then. In some ways, I'm like, I think a lot of people know Richfield is amazing today. But then, it was, it felt like such a hidden gem that I wanted to invest in and build my life in. And then, I got to know La Red Latina and the women in my own community. And we started what is now today a nationally-recognized, unprecedented childcare provider network unlike any other in the nation that's organizing hundreds and hundreds of women to provide quality care and a great start for their kids in a community and society that has really failed to do that. And it is because of Las Mujeres de la Red Latina that really showed me, wow, you can do something in your own community and make a difference. And it was because of the local public health department and working with our city staff to do things like complete streets, schoolyard gardens, so many things in 10 years ago. And that was when I realized that I wanted to invest more and offer more. And in the midst, I remember a lot of inequities continuing to be faced by our residents and our community members in saying, we have to do more. I can't just sit here and do what I'm doing, I have to do more. And that's when we all decided collectively that I was gonna run for office. And I didn't know what I was doing, and none of us knew what we were doing. And there's a lot of learning lessons along the way, but one of the learning lessons is, you know, people will tell, the status quo and the people in power will tell our communities that we need to wait in line, that we're not smart enough or good enough to lead. And what we have shown time and time again is that that is absolutely not true if we believe in ourselves. And there was a lot of things that were built against us, whether it was partisan politics and party leaders saying we couldn't lead, local electeds that were in power at that time saying the same, or community members who said, who are you, you're too young to run for city council. We ran, and we learned along the way doing something that we had never done before. And we made a campaign of people that were really left out of the electoral process and the political process in our community. And we showed that people want to be involved, but that they didn't feel welcomed. And we built a campaign that was rooted in community and really lifted up the leadership of our community members and the assets. And that's how it all started. And then, just months being in office, learning the ropes of what it meant to be a local elected official, we stopped the, one of the largest mass displacements of Richfield residents just a year or two after the largest mass displacement of low-income families in the region that happened at Crossroads at Penn a few years before. Hundreds of families were left on the streets and had nowhere to go in 2015 in the middle of the winter. And two years later, we got together, and we had that people power built already, and we heard, hey, and it was with the schools that we first heard and with the community members and residents here that said, we can't let this happen, we have to do something. And we stopped that from happening again in our community. Again, when people said, there's nothing you can do, there's gentrification happening everywhere, this is bigger than Richfield, and we showed that it wasn't and that we could do something. And then, that led to the creation of the Housing Task Force and residents getting involved. And then, the City Council passing so many ordinances, policies, and protections for our renters, for opening up homeownership to more people in our community when we have huge inequities in ownership rates, and a number of policies that you don't see anywhere else in the country, like affordable and accessible access for our residents. Again, when people said we couldn't do it, the community got together and led. Not one person, we all got together from our school district, working with the city, working with our residents, working with our organizations to make those things happen. And I, a mentor of mine, she told me when I started, when I first ran for office in 2016, and I didn't know what I was doing, she said, you need to write down for yourself why you're running for office, because things are gonna be really stressful, they're gonna be hard, and you're gonna want to give up, and you need to go back to that piece of paper and remember why you're doing this. And I haven't looked at it since 2016. So here's just a couple things that I really, the reasons why I ran, I first ran for office, is because Richfield needs leaders who not only reflect the community, but are skilled in bridging those most impacted in decision-making, in co-creating a Richfield that reflects and welcomes everybody. I'm running because it's time to be courageous and own my leadership and step up. I'm running because I'm out of a genuine concern that the people most impacted by future changes in our district are being left out, that will, and this will likely result in displacement, exacerbation of inequities, and perpetuation of racism. I'm running to build a more welcoming and inclusive Richfield for everybody that regardless of situation or circumstance, you can call Richfield home. And I'm running because I want to be a role model for others who want to lead, but have historically been afraid to do so because the dominant narrative has dictated who can be a leader and what they should look like and how they should lead. And I'm running to grow and challenge myself and to challenge the status quo. And I'm running to lead by example and show that another Richfield is possible. So that's what I first wrote to myself in 2016. And I feel very, very proud to say that we have accomplished that in spades, not just by role modeling a different type of leadership and governance, but we've passed policies and generational impacts that have made this place a better place to live for more people. And I haven't done that alone, we've done it together, all of us. And so, I'm very proud of the work. And if I have any learning lessons from the past 10 years of leading in Richfield alongside all of you, is that it doesn't matter what people think of you or say. If you believe in yourself and you believe in the leadership of others, honestly, anything is possible. And we have shown that time and time again in Richfield. We've created leadership where people said it wasn't possible. We've created change where it couldn't exist previously, and we've completely changed. And now, as a city government, I feel like the work that the staff has done to embed equity within everything it's doing and to look at things differently and to partner with the people most impacted. And the staff has always been innovative and has always led. But just to see how it's evolved over time, I'm very, very thankful to all of you who are here, because we've done that together. And I want to end by just thanking everyone that made this possible. My parents are here in the crowd, my partner is here, my friends, my family, you know. I think in these leadership roles, the people that need to support you the most are your family, because they are the ones, as Amelia said, that are home when you're not home and really need to support your ability to lead. So I want to first thank my family, and then, of course, thank our city staff, our community members. Without all of your support, we wouldn't have been able to do what we're doing today. I would have not been mayor. But we really changed the narrative, and we showed a different Richfield is possible, and I want to thank all of you for that. And I'm not going away, I am just hopefully staying in Richfield and having kids and contributing as a community member. I have wanted kids for a long time, and now I get to shift my child base from 36,000 to hopefully one or two. So, very looking forward to this new chapter in my life. And I guess I'll just end by saying, you know, I think right now there's a lot of polarization and divisiveness in our society, and we don't have to let that come into our community of Richfield, right? We've showed something different. And so, more now than ever, we can't take our community, our rights, the opportunities that we have for granted, because those rights and opportunities will be taken away from us. And it requires that we get engaged in our own backyards, and we support others to own their leadership and get engaged in their own backyards as well. And if anything, these past few years have shown that. So, thank you to all of you, thank you for being here tonight. Thank you for being here from the very beginning, so many of you were here. I was learning how to doorknock with you years ago for the first time. So, it's great to see everyone here, and thank you, it's been an honor to be your mayor. And thank you, Katie, it's been amazing to lead alongside you as well. Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Okay, so please don't feel free, you don't have to stay. We have a long meeting, but thank you for coming. Thank you so much for coming. No need to stay. Okay, I will pass it, or I'll go to the next item on our agenda, which is the approval of the agenda.
Move approval of the agenda?
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded to approve the agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the agenda has been approved. The next item is a consent calendar to be read by City Manager Katie Rodriguez.
Thank you, Mayor. The consent calendar contains several separate items which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, the individual items and recommended actions have also been approved. No further council action on these items is necessary. On tonight's consent calendar, and be patient, it is a long one. Item A, consider to approve the renewal of the 2023 licenses for on-sale 3.2% malt liquor, off-sale 3.2% malt liquor, and second-hand goods dealers doing business in Richfield. The second-hand goods dealers is GameStop and Wedding Day Jewelers. The licenses to sell 3.2% malt liquor, La Viquita Short Stop Off Sale, La Viquita Two Off Sale, Portland Food Mart Off Sale, Pump &amp; Munch Off Sale, Richfield Menoco Off Sale, Speedway 4186, Speedway 4188, Speedway 491, Speedway 4615 all off sale, and then Target Corporation Off Sale. Item B, consider the approval of the renewal of the 2023 licenses for on-sale intoxicating club wine and 3.2% malt liquor licenses. On-sale intoxicating club Sunday license holders are El Tejaban, Fireside Foundry, Frenchman's Pub, Giordano's, Los Sanchez Taqueria, Lindell Smokehouse, Pizza Luce, Potriagonist Kitchen and Bar, VFW. On-sale wine, on-sale 3.2 license holders, Chipotle, Devani's, Joyce Potaya, Millions Crab, My Burger, Patrick Bakery, Red Pepper, and Sandy's Tavern. Item C, consider the adoption of a resolution authorizing Richfield Public Safety Police Department to accept donations from the listed agencies, businesses, and private individuals for designated uses. Item D, consider the adoption of a resolution designating polling places for 2023. Item E, first reading of a proposed ordinance amending modifying the zoning code in relation to landscaping requirement. Item F, consider the adoption of a resolution accepting grants and donations received by the Richfield Recreation Services Department in 2021 and 2022 and authorizing the Recreation Services Department to administer the funds in accordance with any applicable grant agreements and terms prescribed by donors. Item G, consider the approval of setting a public hearing to be held on January 10th, 2023, to consider the issuance of a new on-sale wine and 3.2% malt liquor license for NTLL Hockey Ventures LLC, doing business as Minnesota Whitecaps, located at Richfield Ice Arena, 636 66th Street East. Item H, consider approval of a contract renewal with Adessa Minneapolis for 2022/2023 for auctioning forfeited vehicles from Public Safety Police. Item I, consider a resolution accepting donations to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Item J, consider the approval of resolutions of support for Public Workers Act of Transportation Grant applications to MinDOT for the installation of a sidewalk on 73rd Street and construction of intersection improvements at the 66th Street and Richfield Parkway Roundabout. And finally, item K, consider the adoption of a resolution to accept a grant of $2,395.90 from the Office of Justice Programs for Bulletproof Bets. And I can, I submit all of these items for your consideration as part of the consent calendar.
I'll move the consent calendar?
Second.
The motion has been made to move and second the consent calendar. Are there any comments or questions on the consent? Councilmember Supple.
I just wanted to thank the many generous groups that have given us grants and donations. We had several of them listed here and I really appreciate it. And I also was very excited to see the amendments to the zoning code for the landscaping so that we have some flexibility in where the trees are planted. That's very, I think, a good way to go.
Any other comments? Oh, Councilmember Whelan.
I was just going to echo the comments on the landscaping. I know we'll have a second reading as well, but was part of the, when the Sustainability Commission discussed those and there was a lot of excitement for continuing to improve the types of trees, diversity of trees, and just sheer number of trees that we have in our new developments.
Other comments? Councilmember Trautman.
I just wanted to comment briefly, having an early council meeting start, I've not had dinner yet, and all the restaurants that were listed are, are amazing. It's just a friendly reminder, we have a lot of excellent restaurant options here in the city. That's all.
Thank you, Hungry Councilmember Trautman. All right, looks like we don't have any other comments. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the consent calendar has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Trautman.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item is a public hearing to consider a resolution adopting a spending plan for unobligated tax increment. In 2022, the Housing and Redevelopment Authority approved the preparation of a tax increment management review and analysis report by HRA Financial Consultant Ellers. This analysis identified a significant amount of pooled tax increment that is available to invest in the community in the next few years. There are three separate statutory authorities under which the money can be spent, all different timelines and authorized uses. These options are described in the policies section below. A primary, a preliminary plan to maximize the affected effectiveness of these monies was introduced to the HRA on September 19th and presented jointly to the city council and HRA in a work session in, on October 17th. As previously presented, staff is recommending an adoption of a spending plan or plan for up to $6,346,000 in unobligated tax increment from the Lindell Gateway Interchange West, Urban Village, and City Bella Tax Increment Financing Districts. Per 2021 legislative authority, this plan would allow unobligated tax increment to be spent on projects that spur development and create or retain jobs, including construction jobs. Available increment may be used to provide improvements, loans, interest rates, subsidies, or assistance in any form to private development consisting of construction or substantial rehabilitation of buildings and ancillary facilities, which will create or retain jobs in the state. The attached plan stipulates that preference for financing assistance shall be based on goals identified by the comprehensive plan and the following priorities identified by the city strategic plan. These are a vibrant downtown that includes both new housing and businesses, increased tax base through redevelopment that advances the comprehensive plan, maintaining Richfield as an affordable place to live, and climate resilience through support of projects that advance the Climate Action Plan and Sustainability Goals. The attached plan was adopted by the HRA on November 21 and must be adopted by the city council. The plan does not approve any specific project, but rather makes these funds available to spend on projects that will be individually considered by the HRA when identified. Does staff have, have anything to add? It's a very thorough report.
Thank you, Councilmember Trautman. I'll just remind the council that this is the work session where we talked about those three buckets into which we can put these pooled funds. One is the Housing and Redevelopment Fund, which you're very familiar with. The other is the special legislation that we got related to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then there's this temporary legislation, which we talked about, has the shortest timeline, but the greatest flexibility. And so what staff is recommending here is exactly what we talked about, for now, moving the bulk of the money into that most flexible funding option. And then if we get to the end of that timeline, we can consider pulling that out and putting it into one of the other two funds, which would allow us to continue to try and spend that money on great programs here in Richfield.
Thank you. So with that, I would move that we conduct a public hearing to approve the attached resolution and spending plan for unobligated tax increment.
Second.
The motion was made and seconded to open the public hearing. Do we need a motion to open a public hearing?
No, sorry. It's open.
Okay.
The, the public hearing is open, and so this is a public hearing. If anybody has any comments, now is a great time to come forward. We, we have a slightly less full council chambers than we did five minutes ago. But we'll give folks a second, and do we have anybody calling in? No? All right. Well, one last chance. Seeing nobody here to comment, I would move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Do we need to make a motion to close it? Okay. Oh yeah, that's right. All right, the motion has been made and seconded to close the public hearing. Any comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the public hearing has been closed. And now we can move to the motion.
Now, we would, so the, the public hearing being moved and closed, we'd now, I'd now move that we approve the attached resolution and spending plan for unobligated tax increment.
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Supple?
I just wanted to thank staff, and I know that we went out to Ellers to get like an analysis of this, and I think that's really, really important. So thank you for doing all the research in the background, because I think it's a good plan.
Councilmember Whelan.
I'm, I'm really excited about this. I know nearly every time we've discussed a particular development, I've asked questions about like what other funding might be available to help with some of our goals. And so I'm, I'm really excited that we have this flexibility. I'm excited to see what this makes possible. And also just want to say, this is one of what I'm sure will be hundreds of times that I'm very thankful for all the work we put into the strategic planning process, that it's so clear how this aligns with and fits into everything we're doing and working toward as a city, that we don't need to have a, a separate drawn-out conversation about what are our goals on this front. And so it's, it's just exciting to see this integrated, again, both with, I mean, obviously the development goals, but then the sustainability goals as well. And so just, I'm really excited to see what we can do with this.
Thank you. Councilmember Trautman.
Very similar to what Councilmember Whelan had to say, I just wanted to acknowledge the great work that Director Pelman, you've done and your staff has done to identify these opportunities and get the resources we need to be able to execute on this. And it's, it's really easy for folks in community to, to miss that without good staff doing good work, we just, these are opportunities we would not have. And so I just want to recognize that and say thank you for doing that. And, and I appreciate the opportunity that we have. And for folks that wonder how TIF works and tax increment financing and, you know, when, when there's an opportunity to attract people to build in our city where they haven't built, part of how that, part of how we facilitate that is the dividends that we're getting. We, we have an opportunity to attract that development, but now the fruit of that is also the resources that we have to be able to make some of these really important investments. So, thank you, Director Pelman.
Thank you. Other comments? I, I remember when we talked about the need years ago to update what TIF could be spent on and, and to see that we have fully successfully been able to do that. And it can be a, a pretty political, politically contentious topic. I wish this was a flexibility that was given to everybody in our state, but it, it has, it's not yet. But I'm very thankful and remember the days where we were wishing that we could be more flexible to focus on these priorities, and the day has come. And it's great to see the priorities that this money will be going towards. So extremely thankful, as well as others have said to our staff, and cannot wait to see what comes out of that funding. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
So this item is to consider approval of the renewal of the 2023 Pawn Broker and Second-Hand Goods Dealer License for Metro Pawn and Gun, Inc., 7529 Lindell. And we will be delaying this, but I'll still just read the summary. On November 3rd, 2022, the city received the application materials for the renewal of Pawn Broker and Second-Hand Goods Dealer Licenses for Metro Pawn and Gun, Pawn and Gun, Inc. at 7529 Lindell Avenue South. All required information and documents have been provided, all licensing fees have been received. The Public Safety Director has reviewed the background information and the attached documents and approves of its contents and sees no basis for denial. Unfortunately, I'm told that the public hearing was not noticed with enough time. So I am going to instead move that we continue the public hearing to January 10th, 2023, and extend the current license for Metro Pawn and Gun, Inc. to January 10th, 2023.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded to move this item to the next council meeting. Any comments or questions?
So just to clarify, they will be able to remain open as long as we?
My understanding from staff, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I was wondering why they weren't here. They're always here for this. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. This item is to consider a resolution accepting the transfer of funds from the Lindell Gateway Interchange West, Urban Village, and City Bella Tax Increment Financing Districts to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and consideration of priorities for use of trust fund resources for affordable housing developments. The city created the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in 2020 to construct, preserve, and rehabilitate affordable housing in the community. Since its creation, staff has been seeking revenue sources for the trust fund. In 2021, the state legislature passed special legislation that allows the city housing, excuse me, that allows the Housing Redevelopment Authority to transfer pooled tax increment collected for housing purposes to the city's trust fund. The Tax Increment Financing Management Plan, prepared for the HRA by the HRA's financial consultants, identified pooled tax increment financing available in three TIF districts as eligible to be transferred to the trust fund. And it's great to see the priorities that this money will be going towards. So extremely thankful, as well as others have said to our staff, and cannot wait to see what comes out of that funding.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
So this item is to consider approval of the renewal of the 2023 Pawn Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealer License for Metro Pawn and Gun, Inc., 7529 Lyndale. And we will be delaying this, but I'll still just read the summary. On November 3, 2022, the city received the application materials for the renewal of the Pawn Broker and Secondhand Goods Dealer Licenses for Metro Pawn and Gun, Pawn and Gun, Inc. at 7529 Lyndale Avenue South. All required information and documents have been provided. All licensing fees have been received. The Public Safety Director has reviewed the background information and the attached documents and approves of its contents and sees no basis for denial. Unfortunately, I'm told that the public hearing was not noticed with enough time, so I am going to instead move that we continue the public hearing to January 10, 2023, and extend the current license for Metro Pawn and Gun, Inc. to January 10, 2023.
Second?
All right, the motion has been made and seconded to move this item to the next council meeting. Any comments or questions?
So just to clarify, they will be able to remain open as long as we?
My understanding from staff, yeah.
All right, thank you.
I was wondering why they weren't here. They're always here for this. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. This item is to consider a resolution accepting the transfer of funds from the Lyndale Gateway Interchange West, Urban Village, and City Bella Tax Increment Financing Districts to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and consideration of priorities for use of trust fund resources for affordable housing developments. The city created the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in 2020 to construct, preserve, and rehabilitate affordable housing in the community. Since its creation, staff has been seeking revenue sources for the trust fund. In 2021, the state legislature passed special legislation that allows the city housing, excuse me, that allows the Housing Redevelopment Authority to transfer pooled tax increment collected for housing purposes to the city's trust fund. The Tax Increment Financing Management Plan, prepared for the HRA by the HRA's financial consultants, identified pooled tax increment financing available in three TIF districts as eligible to be transferred to the trust fund under the special legislation. These three districts are Lyndale Gateway Interchange West, Urban Village, and City Bella. The HRA has designated $250,000 from each of these districts for transfer to the trust fund. The special legislation allows these funds to be used to make grants, loans, and loan guarantees for the development, rehabilitation, or financing of housing. The 2023 trust fund budget commits $200,000 of the funds to Richfield Flats, an affordable apartment development proposed to be built at 7700 Pillsbury Avenue South. Additional funds can be budgeted in future years for activities such as single-family acquisition, rehabilitation through the land trust, or other affordable apartment developments. In deciding whether or not to provide funding to affordable apartment developments, the HRA will consider the following priorities for the trust fund. Housing with three and four-bedroom units, housing with units affordable at 30% of the area meeting income, housing with accessible units, housing with supportive services, housing with resident rental subsidies, and/or the preservation and rehabilitation of naturally occurring affordable housing, or projects that also improve energy efficiency and/or use trust fund money to leverage other funding will be strongly considered. Trust fund awards will only be made to projects that exceed the minimum requirements of the city's inclusionary housing policy or the statutory requirements for a housing TIF district. Did staff want to add anything?
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. The $750,000, I'll just remind everyone, in general, that's $200,000 for the Richfield Flats project. It's about $300,000 for a land trust project in 2023. There's $150,000 that we're holding in case the state gets their matching grant for affordable housing programming up and running. It would be for a maximum match of $150,000, so we're moving that there. And then an extra $100,000 in case something would come up relatively quickly, although we can always transfer more funds into this. So that's how we came to that $750,000 start.
Thank you. So then I will move to adopt a resolution accepting the transfer of $750,000 from the Lyndale Gateway Interchange West, Urban Village, and City Bella Tax Increment Financing Districts to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and further move to adopt priorities for the use of the trust fund resources when assisting affordable housing developments.
I'll second.
Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Whalen?
Just again, similar to the last one, really appreciate the clearly articulated and agreed upon priorities, that there is such unity, there's interest from between the HRA and the council in what we're trying to do. And I know the HRA recently had a similar conversation around the rediscovered program, that's primarily single-family homes, that I just, I think it's so important that we continue to be really clear about what we are trying to do with our funds and focusing them in that direction. And so I'm really supportive of this, and again, excited to see more of what we make possible with the money.
Thank you. Other comments?
I'll just add, I am so excited for this, to get more funds into our trust fund. I know that the areas of focus are areas that are really hard to be able to build successfully without assistance, and to be able to have this vehicle where we can add more money to really give the type of flexibility and accessibility for affordable housing for all our residents. Again, very exciting, this stuff doesn't exist in our communities without this type and level of commitment, so excited again to see what will come out of it.
Other comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to consider resolutions approving the 2022 revised and 2023 proposed budget and tax levy and related resolutions. On September 13, 2022, the city council approved and certified a preliminary tax levy of $26,784,573, which included a levy for general fund operations of $21,236,477, a debt service levy of $4,100,600, an equipment and technology levy of $868,400, and an Economic Development Agency levy of $579,096. Accordingly, the 2023 preliminary gross levy represents a 6.6 increase from the 2022 gross levy. The final tax levy, again, $26,784,573, must now be considered and approved by the city council. Taxpayers have received individual parcel-specific tax notices in anticipation of the truth in taxation hearing. We just held that 2022 truth in taxation hearing today, December 13, 2022, at 6:00 p.m. At the meeting, there was discussion around this proposed city budget and levy, including a presentation. If folks are interested in hearing more details about the budget, you can either watch that recording once it comes out, or certainly, we had a lot of conversations in August and September as well about the details. Included for our consideration are salary increases for nonrepresented employee pay plans. Proposed increases are 3% for the management and general services and the specialized pay plans. These would be effective the first full pay period of January 2023. So I know that we just had the full presentation at the truth in taxation hearing. Is there anything further staff would like to add now?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember. I just want to say the 2023 budget was challenging for many reasons, and our manager Verma went over them during the truth in taxation, but it has been tough because inflation has really spiked, and there's such a tight labor market, and then we also had to issue debt for the 65th Street project. It was also challenging because our new finance manager, Kamud Verma, had just started, so she had to hit the ground running, and it was really all hands on deck, and really a lot of thank yous to the staff that were very experienced in the budget, because everybody chipped in and helped us get through it. I also think that this budget, you know, it makes good progress on keeping property taxes reasonable despite the cost pressures. It's also worth noting again that our levy increase at 6.6% was less than inflation. While the budget does anticipate tapping reserves, we have a plan to phase that out over time. Also, there's been progress on the capital improvement plan, so that we are better timing the project and the debt issuance when other debt shurts. So again, a big thank you to Manager Verma, the directors, and the budget experts that helped us put this together this year, and then also thank you to the council for their guidance to tackle today's problems and set us up for a bright future. And we're available for any questions.
Any questions from council? No? Okay.
Then I would, before our comments, I would make the motion to adopt the resolutions approving the 2023 revised and 2023 proposed budget and tax levy and the related resolutions.
Second?
Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Any additional comments? Councilmember Supple?
Well, first of all, I want to thank staff for all the work that they put into the budget. And in case anybody who's looking through the packet, I wanted to point out that part of our ARPA funding is going to be doing a study of like the wage structures, and so some of those things may change, because I know there were some questions about that, that they're worrying that we want to make sure we're paying living wage and those types of things. So that will come up in that wage study with the ARPA funds. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Also, I wanted to thank Finance Manager Verma and City Manager Rodriguez for the work, particularly, I know this was tricky, it was tricky last year as well, but you see what's going on with other cities, and I do think that effort to keep property taxes reasonable is very obvious, and our staff are all but in on balancing running the city well and being mindful of limiting, limited incomes and limited means of residence. So I think this strikes a balance well in another year, and thank you for your work on this.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Troutman?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you Finance Minister, or Finance Manager, Finance Manager Verma and City Manager Rodriguez. I just wanted to point out to our residents, we had, you know, someone, someone asked very reasonably, what do we get for our, for our taxes when we pay our taxes? And I just, I think this is a really good summary, and I appreciate your presentation that talks about the investments that we're, that we're making in our infrastructure. And, you know, technically, the cost, or the rate of inflation, I think most folks pay at around 7.1%. Functionally, when we're undertaking construction projects like the 65th Project, construction costs, material costs, labor costs, they're actually sometimes much more than 7.1%. And so when we look at this, we're getting, we're getting really solid investments in our infrastructure and not neglecting staff. I was really pleased to see that we have the cost of living and step increases for our staff, and we're hiring key staff, and still, because of your really hard work, we have a budget that's under the rate of inflation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments? Councilmember Whalen?
I would add in that I think we, again, that balance is the right word, and I think, unfortunately, I think it's easy to see this as the worst of both options, that I know residents are still feeling the increase in taxes that has come with how much property values have gone up. I also know that it's a, for those residents, it's a great selling point to say that our budget increase is less than inflation. That also means we're working with less resources to try and do the same things. And so I'm, I'm very grateful for all of the hard decisions, certainly City Manager Rodriguez, Finance Manager Verma, but also to each of the department chairs. I know a couple of them are here, many are not, but that, there's a lot of hard decisions that went into this, and I'm really looking forward to some of the long-term financial planning conversations we have scheduled for the coming years to, to figure out how do we, how do we address the, this growing issue that the, if, if property values keep going up, that means it becomes less and less affordable to live here, but also like we need the resources to provide the services we provide. I also do, I'm glad Councilmember Supple mentioned the ARPA funds. I think it is a, a good thing in a year when, I mean, we've had this challenge, many cities are facing double-digit levy increases. This budget does not have a whole lot of shiny new things to celebrate. It is really just, how do we keep doing what we're doing? But because of the ARPA funds, that does have a bunch of shiny new things that we get to do. Some are shiny things we have, should have done a while ago and haven't had funding for, but just want to encourage folks who are wondering, like, what, what are we making possible, to also thank the federal government for that investment in our local communities, and there's like 12 different projects that we're moving forward with on that front as well.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Supple.
Thank you. This item is to consider the appointments to city advisory boards and commissions. Terms of several city advisory board and commission members are set to expire on January 31, 2023. In addition, due to resignations, there are midterm vacancies that should be filled. Terms for advisory board and commissions are for three years. We have attached a list of all the appointments for reference. The city council directs the city manager's office to conduct an annual recruitment seeking applicants to fill vacancies. This recruitment includes a press release and information on the city's websites and social media platforms. Applicants were interviewed at a special work session held on November 19, 2022. To ensure a quorum at future advisory board and commission meetings, the city council should make appointments to fill vacant positions. And I want to thank all the people that came in and interviewed during our Saturday when we did a full day of commission interviews. It's very heartening to hear all the enthusiasm for the community. So with that, I would move to appoint members to fill the expiring or vacant terms on city advisory board and commissions referenced in the attached list.
Second?
Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Any comments or questions from folks? Okay, Councilmember Whalen?
I just want to echo the thanks. There's a whole lot of wisdom, enthusiasm, excitement represented in the 20 or so names of people who are being appointed or reappointed, and particularly, it's always exciting to meet the new folks. I also felt the returning folks this year had some really great ideas of how to keep strengthening our commissions that I'm excited to explore.
Absolutely. Other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Thank you, the motion has been approved. The next item goes to Councilmember Whalen.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is to consider the adoption of the city's legislative priorities for 2023. Annually, Richfield Legislative Priorities have been compiled in collaboration with city departments and stakeholders. The priorities are a list of policy positions and measures the city supports at the state and regional level and bonding requests for city projects. This list of priorities is a summary document to help steer the city's legislative advocacy and outreach in the coming year. City staff pulled together a proposed list of legislative priorities for the city council to review. Based on prior discussions with the League of Minnesota Cities and Richfield's contracted lobbyists, it's recommended that this platform include three to five top priorities, that all items are within the scope of the city's purview, and that the council adopt these priorities formally. The proposed top legislative priorities for this year, the first is to support a bonding bill that includes item House File 664/Senate File 1308 that appropriates $12 million to deconstruct the existing Nature Center building at Woodlake Nature Center and to renovate the site, to pre-design, design, construct, furnish, and equip a new Nature Center building. Project also includes landscaping, renovation of the trails. This is the, because this asset is 50 years old, in need of a new building and improved trail system, because it's such high-use and award-winning in its environmental education programming, and simply the urban green space for residents. The second top priority is to support legislation which would provide the city of Richfield the authorization to propose a local sales tax to support regionally significant park projects. The local sales tax legislation is approved. Those projects will be sent to voters for approval via referendum. We just had a great work session to discuss this, if folks want to listen in or ask us if you want an update. The third priority, support local control of emergency medical services. Current laws do not provide meaningful oversight of the ambulance service providers. There are no response time requirements or control of ambulance billing rates within the primary service areas. We support local control to determine who is best able to provide EMS services in our community. There are many more priorities. Those are the top ones this year. We'll be presenting the adopted legislative platform to elected representatives at the annual legislative breakfast, scheduled the morning of January 12. Representatives will have time to ask follow-up questions and present their priorities for the legislative session. Does staff have anything more to add on this one?
Yes, Councilmember, I just wanted to say this is our second time putting together the legislative platform with a more comprehensive process, and staff felt it went really well. And I just want to thank management analyst Chris Swanson, because he leads this project and always does really good work.
Yep.
I will echo that. I will make a motion then to adopt the proposed legislative priorities for 2023. By adopting the legislative platform formally, council shows these priorities are in the best interests of the community and provides increased visibility for the issues.
Sir, second?
Second?
Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. Any comments or questions?
I'll just say I've been a part of this process before the, the process that we have now and now.
I'll just say I've been a part of this process before the process that we have now, and now a couple sessions, legislative sessions after. And this is a great example of all the different spaces where I think our staff and our council are working much better together, hand in hand, in our roles, both staying in our lanes, but working in partnership. Previous to this, we really did not have much of any influence or ability to weigh in on our legislative priorities that were set. And the meeting would happen pretty late and pretty short. And we can see from even just items on our agenda today, but other items where we have been able to successfully achieve our legislative priorities because, and it's because I do think we're working in a different way that's much more effective for our city and community. So huge thank you to Chris, to Katie, to all of our staff. But I was a part of this process previously, and I am very happy to see how the process has been going. And it's very, very successful. So huge thanks to our staff. All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The motion has been passed. Next item goes to Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
This is to consider approval of a new agreement with the Richfield Tourism and Promotion Board, RTPB. At the September 14, 2021 work session, the city council directed staff to update the agreement with RTPB to provide marketing and promotional services. The updated agreement includes the following governance structure and goals identified at the work session. So the changes or updates include, the governing board would consist of the following folks: three members to represent Richfield Hotels, one member appointed by the Richfield Chamber of Commerce, one resident member recruited and appointed by the city council, one member to represent Richfield Restaurants recruited and appointed by the city council, and as an ex officio member, the Richfield City Manager or their designee. The other requirements include a three-year review requirement to ensure the agreement is being regularly reviewed and updated, a specific scope of services, including goals and progress indicators, a required annual presentation to the city council summarizing services, results, and financial reporting, and updated and clarified fiscal and insurance requirements. Does staff have anything to add?
Thank you, Councilmember. Just some more thank yous. I do want to thank Councilmember Troutman for encouraging us to update the agreement. The existing agreement is 30 years old, so it was time.
No time like the present.
Also, to City Attorney Atitian, RTPB President Gordon Vasicki, and Executive Director Katie Epler for their efforts to hammer out the people. And I'm available for...
Thank you. Questions from councilmembers? Okay.
I move approval of the updated agreement with the Richfield Tourism and Promotion Board.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Wayland?
I just want to say, I, this is, I mean, similar to your comments on the previous item, Mayor. This is something that just, it's public dollars and operated largely as a private, separate thing that I think I went a few months or a year of being on the council and not knowing that this was a public entity we had. And so I'm really excited, again, with some of the themes earlier about fully integrating everything we're doing to have more resident representation, more a broader part of the community on this, and the presentations, and just, yeah, further integrating the work that we're doing together.
Thank you. Other comments? A huge thank you to Councilmember Troutman for your leadership on this, and City Manager Katie Rodriguez for taking this on. Again, a lot of impact to our community, but thanks to the both of you specifically. Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The motion has been approved. The next item is the city manager's report. City Manager Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. Rulaine Onisarosan asked several questions at our last meeting. She has already spoken at length with our staff on all of those topics, so I'll be very brief. The city clerk and the absentee ballot board followed all state laws in handling absentee ballots. The trees that are being removed at Sheridan Pond would need to be removed because they're diseased with Emerald Ashore, or they have rooted into the pond basin. They do have to be disposed at a special site, but we will be following the state law on that as well. And the dredging project at Sheridan Pond, it's due to surface water contamination, which is not what the Superfund site is about. That has to do with groundwater, and there was a former dry cleaner there. And that is being remediated.
Thank you. Any comments or questions on the report? Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Did you have a response, or can you, in January, for the resident who had the concerns about parking enforcement?
Oh my gosh, did I miss one? I'm so sorry.
Yeah, the resident at Clinton and 73rd about the parked truck and the neighbor dispute?
Yes, I did miss that. I'm so sorry. Yes, I will get that January 10.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for catching that. Any other items? Okay, claims and payroll.
I'll move claims and payroll.
Second.
Thank you. The motion has been made to approve and seconded to approve claims and payroll. Any comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Claims and payroll has been moved. Last item, hats off to Hometown Hits. I will pass it on to Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. I will say I was able to attend and ran into Councilmember Hayford O'Leary at the opening of the D Line, and got to ride it a few times already. It's very exciting. I encourage folks, if you use the former Route 5 corridor or just need to get from Richfield up to downtown, down to the Mall of America, or even up to Brooklyn Center, to check it out. It's very exciting. And then, the only other thing I'll add is just my own major thanks to Mayor Maria for your leadership. And I think it is so perfectly fitting that the celebration of your leadership was as much a celebration of all of the other leaders that you have worked with, encouraged, enabled, who have enabled you to step into your role. That is the leadership that I have seen from you and been most appreciative of. And it goes to show the, just how much you've done, that I think a whole sort of genre of work that you were really part of kicking off didn't even get mentioned in the amount of time we had, the sustainability work that I know was part of the, again, those leadership groups that you pulled together in your campaign. And so, just thank you. And I know that both just as a resident in your day job, that you will continue to do that work. And I'm sure whether we realize it or not, we'll continue to be positively impacted by the leaders who you are developing. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wayland. Councilmember Supple?
Thank you. I wanted to say thank you to the public work staff that took us on a tour of the construction work at the underpass. And I know they're probably in a seasonal break at the moment, but they've made tremendous progress, and they've actually punched through so you can actually look through the underpass tunnels. That's pretty exciting. They'll be finishing that next year. I also wanted to say thank you, Maria. You've been an amazing transformational community leader, and you've brought so many people together to strengthen our community. And I admire how you, like, help people step into their leadership and empower others and mentor others and help them grow their skills. So I just want to say I'm going to miss working with you on the council, but I know you'll continue to work with us here in our community in so many ways in the future. And I want to offer best wishes for your new adventures and say thank you again.
Thank you, Councilmember Supple. Thanks. Councilmember Hayford O'Leary?
Also wanted to mention briefly the D Line opening, which was great. I put this online, but just for the record, if you're wondering where this goes and how long it takes, it's about 10 minutes south of the Mall of America or 35 minutes to downtown Minneapolis. The buses come every 10 minutes. It is very easy. And it was a great event that they had. A little bit cold, unfortunately, but it was especially nice because they had those bus heaters. So you got to try out one of the features. Also wanted to mention, the mayor and I were both at the opening of the new Hope Church, or the updated Hope Church, and really impressed with the building and the sort of ideas they had of connecting the building to community. So I'm sure they would welcome anybody to come check it out on Portland Avenue and 72nd. I also want to take my hats off to our outgoing mayor. I was thinking of meeting with you in 2016, spring of 2016, there was this vacancy and you were considering running. And you were just coming from, or I don't know, maybe the day before, talking with a mentor that we both respected. And the mentor told you, like, oh, you're too young. You shouldn't do this yet. Just, you know, sit on that and think about that in a couple of years. And to me, I was like, oh, then she can't do it. And I remember you being like, well, I'm still going to do it. And of course, now, looking back, of course, you were just going to do it. Because that's who you are in this, and you knew what you wanted to do. And that's shown so much. And so not only did you do the job of councilmember and do the job of mayor, you kind of redefined those jobs, and you made those jobs more connected to community and more active, and brought Richfield through a really difficult time and a really transformative time. And as somebody said in that earlier presentation, you've left the city better than you found it, and that was no small feat. So thank you so much, Maria.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Councilmember Troutman?
Mayor, I'm only taking my hats off to you. There are lots of other good things that are happening in the city, but I'm going to reserve the balance of my time just to reflect on what feels like a loss, even though I know it's not. And I have to remind myself, like Jon Stewart famously said in his rally to restore sanity, "Sometimes the light at the end of the tunnel is just New Jersey." And, or Richfield, that's right. But what I wanted to say that maybe hasn't been said is, of course, it's been a privilege to lead with you. But as someone who has led with you, a lot of people have pointed out how you make a platform for leadership for other people. And you are a leader of leaders. You are a creator of leaders. You're an empowerer of leaders. And I just want to reflect for a moment, for everybody's benefit, how that happens. And that happens because of your integrity. It happens because of your strength. It happens because of your compassion. It's big enough for other people to stand on. And it's been such a privilege, and I've learned so much from you, as you have allowed your ego not to get in the way of the people you cared about, of the policies that you cared about. And you led with strength, and you led with integrity, and you led with deep compassion. And our city is so much better for it. I'm such a better leader for it. I appreciate you, friend. And I just, I, this is obviously not the end of your leadership in so many other spaces and platforms, including your family. So happy for you. And thanks for serving our city.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Councilmember Troutman. Thank you so much to everyone for the council, for your support and your accolades and your appreciation. I do have two things that are on the list before I give my thanks, but I don't, won't have too many more times to say, as mayor, that we literally have the best plowing in the state of Minnesota. But I was at a retirement event for a mentor and friend of mine, who, if it wasn't for her, like many other people, if it wasn't for many other people, I wouldn't be in office and leading. Senadora Patricia Torres-Rey had her retirement party, I think it was last week. And so I took my little Honda, 2010 Honda Insight, to go pick up my friends. And I was like, I'll pick you guys up from Richfield, and we'll go to Minneapolis to the event. And I made it fine. And they live right on the border of Richfield in South Minneapolis. I could not get to my friend's house once I crossed the Minneapolis border. My car got stuck. And then I got it out because I, you know, I've got good skills with getting my car unstuck. And then I tried, and I just kept getting stuck. And I finally, like, made it to, like, in front of their house. And they were, like, waiting and watching me get stuck. And they're like, we will drive, and just leave your car here. And my friend was like, my other friend, her partner, which he doesn't, clearly doesn't know anything about Richfield, he was like, how have you been driving this car the whole time you've been here? And I'm like, have you been to Richfield? I don't need to worry. I've never, I've gotten stuck twice in, like, the past 10 years, and it's been in my driveway because I haven't plowed. And so I just wanted to brag about the amazing work of our public works. But it was a great story that I had, and I just couldn't wait to share it with everybody. And then he was actually here tonight, and I was like, how were the roads when you were coming in? Did you tell, could you see the difference? And he's like, yes, I still have huge piles of snow in my, in front of my house. So anyways, I had to share that. And then the second thing is, I think we have our second annual holiday parade this Thursday, right? And I, at...
6:30.
Oh, the third annual, okay, the third annual holiday parade. And then it's at 6:30. So you can look on our city Facebook page or our website to find the route. But it's super popular, especially if you have kids. We have our trucks and all our big equipment with lights. And we'll have Santa and Mrs. Claus there. So really fun community event. And I would try to go a little early because it does get full along the route. And then lastly, I want to thank the city council and every single one on the council. We have really led together from the very beginning, whether we were in office together. Simon started a few months after I did, or if it was in community, like with Ben, Sean, Mary, before you were in office. We have all led side by side. And every single council member on this council, we share so many values. I think we really, we share so much in to have the gift and the privilege to be on a council where we are in alignment with our values, and that is public service above self and above ego, and rooted in community engagement. Every single one of the council members in our council has those two values, above and beyond everything, and has always been, everyone has been very professional, very cordial, has done a great job to work together. It's just made my job easier as mayor. It's, and we've been able to pass so many transformational things that I'm so proud of. So I have learned from every single one of you, and I've become a better, a better leader myself. And we've been through really thick and thin times together, especially in the past few years. And I would say, you know, I feel like you were all leading in your integrity throughout that whole time. And I'm very appreciative to be leading with you, because again, it's been a team, it's been a team effort along the way. So I will miss you all, and I will be your phone a friend when you're like, I need you to walk me off a cliff. I will be that role now. So anyways, I just want to thank all of our council member. And of course, as always, I want to thank our staff, because the city of Richfield and the community of Richfield would not be who we are if it was not for the diligent, day-to-day work of our city staff over the generations. And it's been great to see, be a part of the different generations of our city staff and the community of Richfield going through a rebirth. And I feel very proud that I do feel like it's in a great position. And I feel like we've built a really strong foundation, where we kind of built this era of years of governance in the city of Richfield to get it to where we are today, through innovation, through foresight, through really focusing on what matters most, as Mike Howard used to say, the bread and butter of local government. And then this council and this staff is thinking about, how do we continue that, but in a world that is changing, ever-changing, and diverse in so many ways. And I feel like this council has been the council to shepherd that transformation and that change. And I feel like we have built a solid foundation, and that, this council and our staff, of course. And I feel like we've built a really solid foundation, and we've transitioned, for the most part, from those two types of governance. And I think the city staff has a really good foundation. Our council has a good foundation. We have great ways of partnering with community to keep moving forward. And that's, at the end of the day, that was the thing I wanted to focus on, is what does it look like to have a new type of local governance that's inclusive and welcoming, where everyone can play a role. And I feel like that's where we're at, thanks to this council and thanks to city staff. So thank you to our staff, and thank you to council. And I'll be around just down the road on 11th and 73rd. So, see you all. Thank you so much. We have no other business. I'll adjourn our meeting.